I have to be the director.
I gotta be for it, cause like.
I'm wishing 20 bucks.
Show them where I got a beef or a gun, like. I don't know if they're working on it.
Trying to open 7 minutes.
Were you calling camera?
13, you gotta put that in my. What's his here on stage too?
I saw him.
That is a long time before he.
Yeah.
Yes, he has a good voice.
I didn't see it, I worked it there. Pay for today.
I watched it. It's a good one. Very good. It's gorgeous. It was very Riley back. Once I watched Riley. Something I watched. In the first story.
Yeah. This guy.
Yeah, that guy. He's on your back a lot of like.
Wouldn't we go there?
Yeah, we would.
So many people.
Really? No, we're gonna be sure the oil won't get us. I don't think I've seen you since. Thank you.
We're at the cross. You like it. I mean, it's still right. Your birthday's good.
You probably.
But we were supposed to. Yeah.
Yeah, how are you doing?
I'm awesome.
Not too bad.
Yeah. It's great. This is.
The first day of our. I said no. So many months for the man for ages. She has no pack of water. That's what they have. I don't have this. Because we want to. We can agree to our. For whatever. Sorry, but I said no. The guy was there.
But it's all from. I suppose Alec had he cut these maybe. Yeah, John. They apparently. One of the primary subjects. Questionary. They were. Yeah.
I'd like to follow the spec for meeting in the North Huntington Temple. I was just ordered commissioners for Thursday, March 9th, 2017 awards and DM. Go call me.
Chairman. Commissioner Harold. Here. Commissioner Higginson. Here. Commissioner Bertini. Here. Commissioner Gray. Here. Commissioner Fessenda. There. Commissioner Casero. Here. And Commissioner Martino. Here.
Everybody please rise and play the lead. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If any citizen would like to speak tonight, please sign the vote at the podium. Being being recorded and video streamed. Our first citizen is Isaac Painter. Please state your name and address for record, please.
My name's Isaac Painter. My address is 1273 Micah Drive. Uh, my wife and I, Elaine, um, are saying as a citizen, but also, uh, we have an issue which Andy's pulled up. We live. You can see Micah there. So we live right there. And, uh, we bought the building now. Seven years ago. And my father and I just recently purchased the 40 some acres right there off of my uncle's. The farms been in our family for generations. We bought this property because one, it was on a private road. Two, because, uh, price was great and it bordered our farm. And, uh, a little over a year ago, we started getting folks coming off of Micah. And our driveway comes off Micah and actually is like a hairpin turn, which we share with the other neighbors. Can't see their house down. Let's say down here. Um, the Rangles. So we shared this driveway and the road back in the back here where the actually where like where the R is, it's it narrows down back there. It's about 13 feet wide. And we have notified Senacola, Genacola, A. Um, talked to Steve multiple times. We've actually come to township and think we're on the sign at the beginning of Micah Drive. Saying stating like this is, you know, no commercial access. Building back here or anything like that. But folks followed their GPS. And their GPS, Google and so forth, show that there's actually a, uh, right there, they show that there's an entrance into Vanco. Now, we only primarily get 99% of people are coming for the restaurants. We don't get the dental offices. We don't get the other businesses in there. I mean, all this time, nobody. I mean, once in a row or a while, we'll get somebody for something else. So about a couple of weeks ago, on Saturday, this is a nice Saturday, if I remember correctly. It was, uh, five, six o'clock. We already had had 17 turnarounds. 17. That people come all the way back. They turn around at the very end of the red line here at Micah. They turn around right there where they actually come up. And you can see that they actually drive off my driveway. I have a governor driveway and they go right past my dining room window. And some ski, some revolver. They swear at my kids. They turn around in my yard up there. They ride it off. And she's she's more upset about it than me. Because I. But the township has taken steps to, um, put in and change the commerce loop. Um, but we're just visiting the restaurant, Del Forno last Friday, and on our cars, it still has Main Street. So they're not even changing anything. The address for a new restaurant, it still has Main Street. Um, so it's it takes the businesses to put that into Google and change it. Well, I'm at the point, I came, saw Andy and he suggested me come, but I'm at the point of, I'm gonna start. When people come, I have to, I'm gonna start locking them in and I'm gonna call the cops on me, whatever. Or I'm gonna have them call the restaurant. Somebody has to come get me. Because they swear at my kids. They swear at me. One day I'm fixing my driveway at the end of the S turn there. I'm on my excavator and I'm fixing the drainage and grading it, you know, re-grading after a winter. And then and this person pulls up and they come around my excavator and they wanna drive up my driveway. And they're telling me to stop. I'm like, what are you people doing? And they put the window and I start swearing at them, like, I'm in their road. I'm like, I'm on my driveway. So not too long ago, we had two, two vehicles come up and just ignorant, I've had people come up and my truck, I have four or five vehicles. My truck's parked in my driveway and two ladies in a big quad cab truck come up. They get stuck in my driveway, stuck as in they can't turn around. I go out, they go out of my house at night with the daughter. Move my truck so they can go around my governor driveway. So, I mean, this is getting very, very old. So I'd like to ask the township to either allow the allow them to put five by five, 10 by 10 sign down there says, let's draw it this way. Because everybody is, they either go to Lenny Cross or they go to Micah Drive. Then I can see your farm turnaround up here to machine shop we have right here. They actually come up here. I can tell they leave our house, they come down, they'll come up here and they'll turn around my driveway over here. So I don't know, I need, I'd like some help from you guys and doing something. I mean, allow them bigger signs because people say, oh, you didn't see any signs. I mean, Senacola has one sign down there right now, it's like this, it must be a foot by two. I had to go measure. I'm like, can't really see that, so shouldn't make me write all these ones down.
I don't think you're making any points while we.
Anyways, it's, uh, I haven't even said like, from seeing the amount of vehicles coming into Industrial Park, there's only one like ingress, egress. I would say somehow on that road right there. And I don't know. Who knows, there's a cricket actually runs under this whole entire thing. From back here, we have a spring back and back. And it runs into its pond. And it runs underneath there the whole way. What if something happened one day and nobody could get in or out of that place? And it's there's all them folks that work here. I said to Andy, I said, right on Micah for kind of being, why can't we between Vanco and Township, cut in right on Micah Drive? Cut in a little ramp right here. Cause the grade is good, it'd be easy to cut in, it should be gravel. And then once this thing with Google and everything else is corrected, we could just put a pipe with a gate and make an emergency exit. So if something ever happened, they could just swing it open and people can get an outfit. It's, uh, I'm at it with people coming up there. I mean, my, my daughter, while we're sitting here, texted me, said turnaround. I mean, it's 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 no joke that it's coincidentally. It's 6:45 turnaround. Says all the time. And we, I mean, we moved back there for privacy and we don't have any privacy. And then I don't know what the lighting code is, but while I'm here, um, Vanco recently switched out their lighting on that side of the building, turned it to LED. And LED just shine right over, right in our, we have a real big beautiful sun porch on our house that is that white roof right there, runs two sides. Well, that light just shines right into our, I mean, we're over there watching TV and the light shines. We even have some pine trees up there, but it shines right through, right on her. So I don't know if they can put shields to just reflect the light into their own apartment or what, but it's, uh, that's that's becoming annoying. It's not even summertime. So I don't know. Hopefully you guys can something happen, allow something to happen. Cause I mean, I'm, I'm shortly gonna start blocking people in. The other night I literally parked my truck on the road. I parked my truck right here at the end of the road, right? Well, we go down in our suburban, we're gonna go somewhere. I pulled down, there's literally somebody turning around in the road, like during an eight-point turn, road, like. And then there's somebody else backing down the road. So there's two turnarounds at one time. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Painter.
I just want to plead on that behalf of the safety of my children that we could maybe work together to get something done. Cause they wanna ride their bikes on the road and it's not safe. People are looking at their phones, driving on a narrow road. And, um, I'm not worried about them. I don't let them ride their bikes in our suite. We put in a circular driveway so they could ride their bikes, but people come flying up there. It's not safe for them. They can't sled ride down their hill because it may not come up hit them. So we have five kids and I homeschool them. So imagine having five kids at home all day, stuck in the house, feeling like it's recess. Oh, something might hit you. And you know, I come home a lot and I'm trapped and people are, people are ignorant. They push me off the road and it's it's very narrow. I mean, no, it's narrow because one of your employees came to check on the surface of the road and backed into our pillar when he was trying to turn around on the road. So I'm, you know, one of our pillars, pillars. So it's, um, it's, you know, terrible problem. And while we're at it, I'm a little concerned about the noise down there. There's a brewery and now two restaurants. I think maybe they're only open until 11. We've had one nice Friday evening and people were definitely there until 11. And I can hear what their conversations and their passwords. And if I can hear them, that means all five of my children are also hearing them. And so if we're gonna address lighting or something like that, I don't know, the sound just bounces off that concrete right up to our house, so. We never expected there were gonna be two restaurants and brewery down there, but it's great for the township, but I think that's great for my kids. Thank you.
I'm Kirk, um, Cogro.
McConville.
Cogro.
That's correct. Nobody ever gets it right.
State your name and address for record, please.
Uh, 11322 McKewer.
We have a problem that we've had since we moved into the house. Um, there's a storm drain on the corner of Seminole and McKee. And water coming down McKee goes through the storm drain, comes underneath McKee and drains next to our yard. And there's a ravine next to our yard that's now at certain points for ATP. And since we've been there numerous times, parts of our yard have fallen into this. And we've lost, I'd say at least, I have pictures too that I can show you, at least six feet of our yard, just in the four years we've been there. We've addressed this before. We had Andrew Vanco come over and look at it. And he is on this where, you know, without stabilization, this is continuing to fall, our yard is continuing to fall in. And, uh, what they're saying is it's not the township's issue because it's not their property. It's not their property, but without the storm drain there, there wouldn't be any water coming next to our yard into this. He calls it the stream, like older ravine, whatever it is. But it's just, it's getting deeper and deeper. And when it rains, you can hear the water rushing through there. We've had, uh, there's cracks now, there's more sections. Does he have the picture? Yeah. And just, and we've lost a pipe where some of them fell out because a section of the hill fell out just this winter. And it's just, it's getting worse and worse. And it's just, not only is it just, we're losing our yard and now it's a hazard. If anybody was over there, they could fall eight feet into that thing. And another person's gonna have a death. Yeah, I might have lost it or something along those lines. But I just, they're saying it's not their issue because it's not their property, but it was created by that storm drain. Without that storm drain there, that problem will not be there. The water would not be continuing to feed through there. And, um, someone told us about 10 years ago, there's a water main break up by the corner, up by the where it's not a restaurant, it was something else before. And, um, the way it's, it got a lot worse after that issue, after the water main break. Cause they said the water just poured in there and it got worse. And they just, we just keep watching it and there's nothing we can do about it. And I had Andrew, you know, James Pilberry. He's a hydraulic engineer for Westmoreland Conservatory District. He came over with me and he walked up there through, through the creek with me and everything. And he explained what needed to be done. He said, what needed to be done was to get the black pipe to connect into the pipe coming underneath the street. And that going with gravel and landfill, whatever. It's the only way this can prevent everything continuing to fall in. I'd love to try to build a wall and it's just, I can't even build a wall there and it's just so bad. And, um, you know, I just, I just feel without that storm drain in there, we wouldn't have this issue. You know, there wouldn't be no water moving through there at all. And, um, you know, they said they don't have any right away. I'll give you all the right away you want for my yard. I don't care what they have to do, you know? I just want that. I don't wanna keep losing my yard, you know? I don't want anybody to be walking over there and get hurt. We have a little dog, um, we have nieces and nephews or whoever, our house, plenty in the yard. You know, someone's gonna fall in there sometime. And it's, you know, from the pictures, you can tell how deep it is. You know, it's not just a two-foot drop. And, um, this one is all the way down McKee, behind all the houses down there. But all the other houses, it's way in the backyard and it's only maybe two feet deep. It's not even, you know, a hazard back there. But we're right at where it starts. And, uh, you know, and there's trees there, there's one. And, um, you know, who knows what's gonna fall in there next? You know, if we keep losing property, you know, the big tree might fall in. I don't know what's gonna fall in, but, um, I just really wish that, you know, the township would work with me somehow and get some kind of resolution to this problem. You know? I don't know, it's part of my property, it's part of my neighbor's property. I haven't talked to my neighbor about this at all, but his property, my property was falling into it. On his side, he has no problem, his driveway running down there, he has no problem at all. But I just keep it as a normal on my yard. And, you know, and I just, I'd like to see some somehow, you know, I'm willing to talk and meet and work with anybody on this. I would appreciate it and then you guys could. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Now that's it for citizen input, thank you. Any commissioners have anything for, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Painter?
I would just like to say that we've been working on this, as Mr. Painter mentioned, Andy's been working on it myself, Mike Turner. We're trying to find, do some additional wayfinding signage in the area. It is a difficult situation. People are coming from out of the area, obviously don't know where they're, where they're going. And if you, if you use your, your phone GPS, which I did, it tells you to turn on Micah Drive. It says turn left right when you get there. It's, it's, it's bad situation because it's just what it does. And if you get, if it would tell you maybe after you passed, let me say Micah, I think it's actually Iris. But unfortunately, it doesn't do that. There's probably a lot of people listening to their phone, not even looking at the map and they're making that, they're making the turn down your road. So we're gonna try, try to put some additional signage. We put some up on Micah, but by the time they get there, it's too late. I think we're gonna try to put some down near the intersection of Iris. Mike calls the wayf- wayfinding signage and I think it's something we can do. We can probably put it in our right of way if we had to work with someone, the county, whoever. I think we could probably do that. I think that we'll have to work with us on that, try to get people, once they get past your road, I think they'll be okay. That's what we're going, what we're hoping to do. Andy brought this up actually at our staff meeting earlier this week and we had talked about it. He had brought, he's brought it up a few times. It just continues to be a problem. So we're aware of it. The way they describe it is accurate from my perspective.
I can just give you some background. This problem, I think, really started with Senacola. Because you had a lot of people coming that don't go to the area. Everybody locally knows where Vanco Industrial Park is and how to get in there. But if you've got somebody coming from the road, Pittsburgh, Greensburg, and they're not familiar with, with Vanco, they're following their phone and their GPS. And like John said, we both tried it with our respective phones and GPS units and you turn left and you turn left and you find yourself on Micah. We suggested to Vanco, rather than use their address to 1061 Main Street, why don't we name that street that comes back in around the industrial park? So they were agreeable with that. We let them pick the name. They chose Commerce Loop. And that was sent into the post office sometime last fall as being the, the new address. Unfortunately, what Mr. Painter found out, what he advised Ron and I earlier this week, is that it's really driven by the businesses. That's what gets Google to change their mapping. Well, we looked and we found that, um, while Senacola has listed their address now as 2000 Commerce Loop, comma, 1061 Main Street, Vanco Industrial Park still lists their address as 1061 Main Street. We've asked them to change it. They said it's too much trouble. It causes people to have to get new letterhead, change their websites, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know what's gonna change it until the post office says, you don't have to deliver your mail on 1061 Main Street anymore. I don't know if anybody has any ideas. I, I certainly understand Mr. and Mrs. Painter's problem. There's not enough room at the end of Micah for a cul-de-sac. It is very narrow.
I think a sign about that, Andy, you can put a sign down here for sure.
If people read it. I, I had thought maybe you put a sign right around where the driveway goes into Fairlon Hometown Fire Hall and Rose Creek, saying Vanco Industrial Park, Senacola Restaurant. Uh, when ruined, turn left, you know, however many yards or feet it is. Try and make them realize that. I hope that doesn't just make it worse, but it's frustrating.
We're gonna keep working on this. It's a legitimate concern. We're gonna try to keep working on it with some different options. Thank you.
Okay, next gentleman, Mr. Porter, uh, letting down the field road.
I think, um, there were, that was referenced that Andy wrote probably, God, it's gotta be five, six, seven years ago now. Was it 13? 13? Um, he's been there, I've been at the site. There's actually, you guys probably, some of you are familiar with it. We hear a lot about the, the stream on the key road that runs behind his property. And that stream probably was relocated years ago from a developer. Andy and I have walked this along with, you mentioned Jim Pillsbury, Westmoreland Conservation. Some of you know him. And he probably, he actually believes that stream was probably relocated when the development was built. But that's actually a creek. It's not just a, it, it might dry up on occasion, I, I don't know that, but it actually, it's a natural waterway. It's a creek even that might be relocated. There's certainly erosion there. What we do is certainly put water in there like we do on any other drains in North Huntington in the township. And we, you know, we cross the water, the road, we're crossing water underneath McKee. The, the problem is, you folks are familiar with, this is no different than any other property in North Huntington where there's erosion along the creek. There's, there's a lot of properties that, above a creek where there's erosion and so it's something that happens. So we've had people in North Huntington, we've had some people in Jacktown, I know years ago, they've gotten their permits, they put in rip raft, they get permits from Westmoreland County Conservation. They, they do a, a stream bank armory project. They, they do that. It's not something we've done on behalf of individual property owners. And I would, you know, I would at least want you to get the opinion of the solicitor before we, you know, take doing that. Even though we could certainly get an easement. I think anybody would give us an easement to, to fix the problem on their property. I, I would, that's what I would be looking to do. So we're familiar with it. I think Andy's assessment is accurate. I'm familiar with this. He's familiar with it. Rich Albert's familiar with it. We, we're all familiar with it over the various years, what's, what's going on there. His situation is tough. I think it really, it's, it's, it really bends right, right around his property. There's probably a lot of erosion at that point, more than what it straightens out behind on, or that it parallels McKee. Andy, I don't know if you have anything else on, on this one. You're, you're very familiar with it.
This one picture that Mr. McConville passed around, that tells the whole story right there. At the end of our pipe, I'll bet it drops three or four feet to the stream bottom. And I wasn't aware of the water main break that you mentioned tonight, that, that was not something I knew the history of. But that would make sense. If you had water running for a, a great volume for a long period of time and it eroded the stream bottom, it, it's created a slope that's almost vertical. So every time you get more written and that forces the stream into a tighter channel as it cuts down through, that undercuts the bank, the bank falls in, now it's loose, it gets washed away. that undercuts the bank. The bank falls in. Now it's loose. It gets washed away next storm. It is a, it's, it's an almost vertical bank. And it's a easily six, eight foot drop off. The answer I suppose would be to try and fill that in from the bottom and make that more gradual. So that instead of being vertical, it's more of a laid back stream like that and, and do something so that it doesn't erode either riprap or vegetator or gabions or something like that. Certainly our water's a part of it, but I think even if there were no storms towards there, it would be a natural stream channel. But as you know, the, the whole problem we have with Roth Drive and so forth, that watershed is so built up. No stormwater management in it and it, it just has such a high amount of impervious area when it rains. Look out below because it's an awful lot of water. We've had problems all the way down the key. So that's something maybe we could discuss if there's a way we could work with, um, property owners to do something to try and armor that, uh, stream bed to try and prevent further erosion and make it a little less deep. So the walls don't have to be as deep. We'll discuss that.
Can you build, build that, bring up to a level of pipe with, with stone or something? I mean, it'd have to be pretty sturdy, stone.
It's just gotta be something that's heavy enough that when we get the next major storm, it won't wash away. Now, if you, if you did something, just regular vac fill on the bottom, but then armored it with stone at the top, you know, probably twelve, eighteen inches of heavy stone, that would work. Certainly cheaper than, um, putting stone in the whole thing. Cause we routinely have vac fill from projects where other works is working. That may be an option, but you gotta do both. You can't just do one without.
I agree. I agree. I, I think, I think it's definitely worth, worth discussing and trying to come up with a solution to it. And I agree with you. That's worth for trauma there. Hell, water's very powerful. Thanks, once it gets moved and signed.
Thank you. Next item intended for session discussion item.
Thank you. Just wanted to note tonight for the board, that's the police chief job description we had talked about at our last meeting. Based on input of the board that evening, there were a few changes made to the, um, proposed job description that may as a providing to you. I'm hoping I captured what you were looking for based on the majority of the board at our last meeting. Those changes aren't old face prints. You can see them. Um, there was nothing removed from the, from the job description. There was only some things added. And again, just to go over those, there was some information, some words, words added related to certain level of training, police command training we added. And also we added under the skills and knowledge, we added a few provisions, one related to budgeting, one related to knowledge and collective marketing. So those are the changes. And again, at some point, um, if the board's comfortable with the job description, we can adopt it and then move forward. And that's why it's open for discussion tonight.
Amy Coleman?
I, I got just one, and I apologize for not catching this last time we discussed this, but are we then set on, on, uh, basically to perform the first sentence?
Darryl, tell me where you, where you are.
The very first paragraph, education experience is our qualifications.
Okay, so it's the, it's the one that says ten years of experience. There's a paragraph. There's a lot of page rate.
Yeah, and basically the first, first, first sentence, ten, ten years of full time support police officer and then five years, which must have been a supervisory role. Are, are we stuck on just limiting, limiting that to police supervisory work only?
Well, I, I don't think it's specific. I mean, it, it says, um, five years of which have been in the supervisory role. I would think that someone, it, you would be important for someone to be supervisor in a, in a police setting versus, let's say, for instance, this is no offense to anybody, that, you know, possibly he worked at a, um, service station, managed, managed, uh, paper, the grudges for, for employees. I think it's probably different than, it doesn't specifically say that, but I think that's what the intent is here, that someone has experience in the police field.
But there are other supervisory positions out there that are actually more demanding and stressful than that of the police law. So, I mean, somebody can show that, that they have that intent. And, and for instance, and I'm gonna go where I always go, military. I mean, just, just, just consideration. So.
I think it's something you can consider. Someone can demonstrate that their supervisor experience is comparable or superior. I would at least, I would at least consider it.
Okay, I, I'm just curious. I mean, I, I didn't know if we were restricting ourselves by saying that or if that, or, or be the case if we would, you know, entertain that as well, supervisor experience or not. No, right. I agree. It has to be something, yeah, I'm not a supervisor at, at, nothing against anybody who wants to cheat or anything.
No, no offense to anybody. It's just what it, what it is.
All right. Just, uh, just curious. Just wanted to know where our thought process was.
I'm, I'm okay with we discussed it obviously a little bit more at length last, uh, meeting. Um, obviously you're, you're glad that I think what we left the meeting with. Uh, the first part that I liked Darryl was discussing, I mean, it seemed like it was a pleasure of the board last time to, you know, take out for the second part, you know, more years' experience and not having any type of degree. I just like kinda questioned, you know, you say the master's degree in related fields preferred. If we're just saying it's minimum qualifications, we even need to include all that. I mean, I understand where you're going with it, but, um...
I like it. I think it's, I think it's a preferred requirement. So if someone has more, you know, give, you know, give deference to it. If you don't want to, but I think it, it lets somebody know. I mean, I've certainly looked at jobs where they say bachelor's degree in public administration, masters preferred. So they get twenty resumes in, they're gonna be able to apply. Masters. That's, I, I, that's what I see. So I think it's okay to leave those preferred. It's not a requirement. I think it's, I think it's okay with it.
I'm, I'm okay.
Anybody else study further discussion on it?
I'm good.
And we can, um, what I would do is, you know, I'll put it on the J Jennifer meeting next week for approval. Yeah, I apologize. That's the only item I have tonight. Thank you.
Uh, next item intended for planning and engineering topic, uh, Mr. Blanco.
There are three items I would like to present tonight. First one is subdivision three of two thousand seventeen. It's not really a subdivision at all. It's a lot consolidation. This is at P S Industries down off nine ninety-three. And they actually own three parcels down there, two of which have buildings on them. They approached us last fall about adding on to one of their buildings and we started looking at the site and found out that there is a property line going right through the middle of their building. And I'm not sure how that ever happened to begin with. It's been that way for quite a while. But we stress that if one of those lots falls into their hands, you've got a part of your building owned by somebody else. So they acknowledged that that's a problem. What they're looking to do is take those three parcels, combine them into one parcel. And then I think we'll be seeing the site plan here in the next month or two for an expansion down there. Which is a good thing, but this is really just tying up some loose ends. There are some additional pieces of information that are just missing from the subdivision plan. It's not really a change. It's just things that are, um, should be shown in order. So they have promised to get us revised by ours showing that. The planning commission would, would like an approval with those changes. So it's a conditional approval, but if they can get that drawing in, that condition goes away. It'll probably be resolved by the time we get to the meeting next week. So I'll prepare the, um, resolution as a conditional approval that that condition may go away. There you go. That's a, a great overview showing you the, the buildings. Okay, the next item is subdivision four of two thousand seventeen, Justin and Christine Turk. They live at, um, the corner of Fern and Astro Street. And they, um, would like to build a detached garage. But right now, the additional lot that they own is actually a separate parcel. You can't have a garage as a freestanding structure on its own without, um, a residence to accommodate it. So they're just combining the two lots into one. It'll make a larger lot and we then will allow them to put that detached garage. I think the commission recommends approval of that. Have questions? Okay, the last item, uh, is a cell phone tower. Andy, just wanted to interrupt for one second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, and, excuse me, I'm employed by Verizon Communications. Therefore, discussion of this topic is a conflict for me. I'm gonna excuse myself from the board and go sit. The audience turns over. Thank you.
Uh, we received a site plan application from, uh, Verizon Communications and Horvath Communications for a cell phone tower at the southwestern corner of the fifty some acre Kerber Farm. And it's been quite a while since we've had a new cell phone tower built. The last one was built with the turnpike interchange by Sprint Communications. And that was kind of an interesting situation because the turnpike itself is in zone. So, um, they demonstrated the need for it and it was approved. This one is different in that it's in a residential district. Now, our zoning ordinance only permits cell phone towers in a commercial district. It is not permitted use in a residential district. But Verizon went to the zoning hearing board and based on the evidence they presented of, uh, poor coverage in that area, the zoning hearing board granted them a use variance, meaning that they can come in and use, uh, apply that use, put that use in place in a residential district. So, um, they've worked with Mr. Kerber. This would not be a transfer of property. It would be a lease. And they are proposing a hundred and ninety-nine foot, what they call a monopole. So it's not the old things with the structural steel and the cross members and the braces. It's a single, um, unified spire that comes up from the ground. And I think one of the nicest things about it is that they've proposed to permit three other cellular, uh, phone providers and our public safety if we wish to put antennas on that pole. So if AT&T or Sprint or somebody else comes along and says, hey, we need better coverage too, they can lease part of this pole and they're making provisions for them to put equipment at the bottom with their own. Because the zoning hearing board looked at, um, the use and kinda took that matter out of the planning commission's review, really the things the planning commission looked at were screening because they're required to have landscaping around the equipment at the base of the tower. Where the tower is located in terms of if, uh, it were to fall, heaven forbid, what would it hit? And they have put it more than two hundred feet from all of the surrounding homes and property lines so that should something happen, uh, it's not going to fall into somebody's kitchen window. Mr. Kerber, who owns the property, he and his wife have signed a, um, acknowledgement and, uh, waiver of any concerns regarding it falling on their property. And we do have, um, Joe Perotti, who's an attorney, working with Verizon and, uh, George Francis here tonight. He's with Horvath Communications. And I'm sure they can probably give you more information than I can about this. One of the exhibits they presented to the zoning hearing board was existing coverage in the township, which is shown in blue. I guess blue is, uh, coverage if you're outside the building. Green is good coverage if you're inside the building, based on all of the current cell phone towers that we have. And you can see that there is an area that doesn't have very good coverage down around Chestnut Hills, Knights Landing, Office Station Road, Turner Valley Road. And I have heard complaints from people who live there about the poor cell phone service there. So I think it's a legitimate deficit in their system. What they're able to do with this tower, um, and maybe I misspoke. I think the tower's a hundred and ninety-five feet and there, there's a four foot lighting rod on top of that. But all of this blue area is the coverage that they'll be able to add by placing a tower here. So gentlemen, did you have anything you'd like to add that, um, maybe I didn't cover? Cause I think you probably have a better knowledge of the technical end of this than I do.
Mr. Blanco. I've said it perfectly. Essentially, there is a significant gap in coverage in the community. Um, so what Horvath and Verizon are proposing in this tower, as Mr. Blanco would, and to other wireless providers will have the opportunity to co-locate on it. But I mean, other than that, and that's the building, I mean, that's essentially it. It'll measure a hundred and ninety-five feet and I, uh, there'll be a four foot lighting rod at the top. It'll be landscaped at the bottom. Once the tower's in the air, the only time it'll be visited is for routine maintenance. Uh, the site's unmanned, so there will be, um, no technicians there, no water, no sewage, no lighting will be there. So once it's up, um, you know, it's, it's essentially just up. And it looks like a, like a monopole and the antennas will be flush mounted at the one hundred and ninety-five foot mark. So, um, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions with Mr. Francis, uh, who's here with me as well.
I have a question. How close is it gonna be to those houses back here, Prover State?
I don't think I have those exact measurements. The... Five hundred feet.
Twenty-five hundred feet?
Five hundred.
Oh, five hundred. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just need your name, your record.
Sure. It's, uh, Joe Perotti, P E R O T C I.
Another question. Would that help our communication with the police and public, our departments and everything along with your fire departments too?
Absolutely. Um, space is made available on all of Horvath's communication towers for locally MS police, um, fire departments, et cetera, to attach their equipment to the tower. And, um, that's done free of cost too. So if the community would find a benefit in that, um, that space would certainly be made available.
I got one question. Uh, Innes says that Mr. and Mrs. Kerber are stating that they are, their buildings are within the fall zone. Which buildings could that be?
I'm probably that if I heard Mr. Kerber, the state of his property. What's the question, Wayne?
Uh, it says here that the buildings, you have buildings within the fall zone of the tower.
We have two small storage buildings that we store farm equipment.
Oh, let me just, the storage, it isn't the store or anything like that?
Hey, Tom, I need your name and address, your record.
Thomas Kerber, eighteen oh seven Duffy Road, North Huntington.
Tom, there is a, a leased home there, rented home, is there not? Or is that not occupied?
Do you guys have a little more specific question?
Isn't there a, a residential building on your property at that back corner as well?
Yes, it is. That's the old farmhouse down the Warren Razor. There is a tent over there.
The, the tower is, um, I believe right about here, isn't it?
Yes.
Proposed tower.
That's about right.
So is it within the fall zone?
No. No.
The dwelling is not?
Your building inspector, Tom Guarn, taped it about two weeks ago and it's full of two hundred and ten feet of house.
Yep. Thank you, buddy.
And I should probably point this out too. Um, the industry standard nowadays is when communication towers are constructed, if there were some catastrophic event, they don't fall like standing timber. So, you know, for example, if my pen is the tower and there were some, um, active god that were to occur, the tower wouldn't fall at its base. It would fall at approximately the fifty percent mark. And that's where for structural purposes, the tower's at its weakest. So it would essentially collapse upon itself. So as far as the fall zone goes, it's not exactly a, a one-to-one setback where it would fall like timber. The design out it collapses upon themselves. But, um, in my time, I've never seen a tower collapse. My firm does quite a bit of... My firm does quite a bit of work with Crown Castle. And over the years, there have been many disasters happening through the Gulf. And when Hurricane Katrina came through and wiped out essentially the entire Gulf, Crown didn't lose one communications tower. So they're really constructed for the elements that, you know, that specific region of the country is normally experiencing.
I got a question for Tom. Does the person you rented the house to aware of this tower going to be there?
Yes, they are.
So they are aware of it?
Thank you.
Any comment? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richie, make a lineup.
The planning commission does recommend an approval of this.